All right, today is a very particular day in the history of this city, a unfortunately noteworthy day in the city. And so, as the Chair of this meeting, I want to go out of order a bit and ask the members of this council who have been on the ground in what is easily the most costly natural disaster we have had in the history of the incorporation of this city. One of some of the most tragic and devastating days that we faced at any point in our history. And we've seen a lot in this city. And this past week has surpassed much of what we've seen. And so, I'll ask as many members who want to speak to speak, but I want to begin the conversation today and the sharing and the reflections today with our colleague who's been at the center of it, on the street, on the front lines, from the very beginning of this tragedy through today. I want to yield the floor to Councilwoman Park of the 11th Council District.
And apologies, just before Councilmember Park begins, this is a part of the -- so, council is afforded the opportunity to make announcements to the public. So just to clarify, this is a -- the council is taking the announcements out of order that would normally take place at the end of the meeting. So this is an opportunity for the councilmembers to update what's going on in their districts and around the city, and is not intended to be a discussion for which we would need to open up public comment. Sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. This day feels somber, and I know that we are all saddened by the unimaginable devastation that has swept across Los Angeles over the last seven days. Thousands of families are displaced, their lives turned upside down in an instant. The destruction in the Pacific Palisades is staggering. Entire neighborhoods, our schools, our library, our parks, so many beloved businesses, and countless homes are all just gone. It is really hard to describe the scope and the scale of this loss. A beautiful, thriving, vibrant, engaged community now just completely wiped off our map. Scorched hillsides, charred, smoldering remains of homes, chimneys rising up from the smoldering ash like gravestones, alarms chirping, toxic air, and the emptiness. It feels otherworldly, really. Our beautiful Pacific Palisades is gone. For the residents, life will never be the same. And it's not the same either for me now or for my staff. My entire district has changed, our priorities, and where I am needed. As you can imagine, my team and I have been overwhelmed with the thousands of constituents who need us during this immediate crisis. Thank you, Councilmembers Price, Nazarian, Lee, Padilla, and Hernandez, for lending CD-11 your human capital. Your teams are on the ground with mine, answering phones, emails, running our donation center, and sometimes just giving hugs, because that's all there is to give. They have been incredible ambassadors, and we literally would not have survived these last few days without their help. Councilmember McCosker and Councilwoman Hutt, thank you for your offers to send staff. We look forward to wrapping your team into ours in the coming days. We know the news cycles will shift, the politicians are going to go back to Sacramento, and we are going to need your help and their help even more, because it's the rest of us left here to mop up this mess on the ground. Thank you, Council President, Councilmember Lee, Councilwoman Rodriguez, Councilmember Yaroslavsky, Councilmember Price, for visiting my district and bearing witness to what happened. I also want to thank everyone who reached out to offer kind words and support and extra donations and resources that lifted me personally when I needed it the most. Thank you. I know you're going to be here for me and my constituents in the days ahead. I also want to thank my incredible CD-11 team. None of us have ever done anything like this before, but the professionalism, the efficiency, and the compassion of their response has been nothing short of extraordinary. On Tuesday, as fires were burning in residential areas, my team was still going door-to-door, begging people to evacuate. They worked well into the night, helping people out, hosing down roofs, and collecting items left behind to return to their owners. They have been on the ground in the Palisades every day since, putting out small fires with dirt, recovering lost pets. They even found a lost engagement ring and returned it to the owner. They have been staffing evacuation centers, running donation drives, seeking out what needs to be done, and engaging in selfless acts of service without ever being asked. There is no handbook, there is no department, and there is no precedent for what my team did over this last week. And I personally have never been prouder of anything in my life than to be a part of this incredible team. I also want to thank our firefighters, our law enforcement personnel, and our emergency responders, who have relentlessly been on the front line since day one. Their courage and determination has been on full display during unimaginable circumstances. Our firefighters at Stations 69 and 23 in the Palisades, and at Stations 19 and 109s in Brentwood are beloved in our local community, and I know they personally feel this tremendous loss. Supported by our partners from across the state and across the country, they fought valiantly to save Mandeville Canyon, and they are still out there right now trying to get these fires under control. We have a lot to talk about when it comes to our fire department and our critical infrastructure. I won't do that now, but as a city, we owe it to our firefighters and to all Angelenos to fully understand what happened with this fire. We also have to find a way to get our fire department all the resources it needs, not just to manage the day-to-day, but to ensure that they have what they need during a major event like this. I'm introducing motions today that will start those conversations, and I hope you all will join me in the commitment to prioritizing public safety and high-functioning infrastructure in our city. As you can imagine, this has had a traumatic and life-changing impact on countless thousands of lives. I feel the heartbreak in every conversation, and I absorb the pain in every hug I share. As a city, our singular goal must be to ensure that residents have the resources they need to rebuild their lives and come home. I've introduced a package of motions today to establish a recovery plan for Los Angeles that includes everything, from missing animals to criminal activity, debris removal and small business assistance, to housing relief and long-term financing for infrastructure and facilities. I also want to thank and acknowledge the cities of Paradise and Santa Rosa, who've been through their own similar tragedies and who worked closely with my policy team to inform some of the motions that we're submitting today. I am also asking that we create an ad hoc committee for L.A. recovery, so that we can bring structured oversight and management to the countless state and federal resources we're going to need and the work across city departments that will be necessary. I know many of you have great ideas, and I know you all want to help. CD-11 needs all of you right now, so we appreciate your ongoing support and collaboration as we rebuild our city. And to my friends and my constituents who have lost their homes and their businesses, I want them to know they are going to have a clear voice in our path forward. I am determined to fight for the resources they need and deserve, and I want them to know we are going to rise from this tragedy stronger and more united than ever. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Park.
Lastly, I want to commend and express my deepest appreciation to all the firefighters and first responders who have been on the front lines, day in and day out, fighting to save lives, property, businesses, and to keep our city safe. Words cannot truly express how important you are to our communities, and it is clear that Los Angeles owes you a debt of gratitude. These wildfires have been historic, and the impact they have had on Angelenos everywhere cannot be overstated. This has been a crisis unlike anything we have ever experienced, and our response must meet the moment like never before. As a council, it is our responsibility to ensure that we are doing everything that we can to protect our residents and to seek solutions to these problems that plague our city. It is our job to ensure that Angelenos are provided with core services: police, fire, roads, sanitation, parks, sidewalks, streetlights. For me, the events of this last week have put things into perspective. As we begin looking at the budget of the future, I think it's prudent and critical for all of us to take a really hard look at what and where we are choosing to place our resources. We owe it to our residents to assess these priorities in a new light. As the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, I look at what has happened both to our city and beyond, and I know that there are endless questions about what has happened. What could we have done differently? What are we going to do better in the face of the next disaster? They are critical questions, and I promise that we will take a look at everything we can to truly understand how we can ensure our city becomes more resilient and better equipped to face future challenges. As Councilmember Park mentioned, the comprehensive package of legislation that we are introducing today is aimed at addressing all these concerns, to give us clarity on our city's response to these fires, to help our city recover from the destruction caused by these fires, to create a formal protocol that improves communication between departments that respond to emergencies in an effort to minimize issues in the future, create a plan to protect communities from the mudslides that can come after wildfires and are equally devastating, explore other key measures to strengthen our city's response and ensure the residents who have been impacted today and anyone who experiences something similar in the future have the support and guidance they need from our city. Colleagues, we owe it to our residents to take decisive action and turn the lessons of past tragedies into concrete solutions. Let's come together to build a faster, a safer, more resilient Los Angeles for the future, and I look forward to working with all of you again. Councilmember Park, our hearts are all with you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you. So many of our districts were so deeply affected by these fires and these winds that are just unprecedented. The tragedy that started off in the Palisades and continues to ensue continues to bear threat to so many parts in the San Fernando Valley and so many other parts of the city. We're seeing what the Eaton Fire has also done to threaten so many other areas. The Hearst Fire sadly erupted in the middle of the night at about 10:30 in the evening. And like you, Ms. Park, sadly, my district is so acutely aware and familiar with what this feels like, because we've had so many circumstances of having to endure mass evacuations. It's what has led to the recalibrating of how we conduct emergency evacuations and changing the way we do things. But clearly, there is still more work to do in the balance of our city. I want to take a special moment to thank Anthony Espinoza from my team, because when the fires broke out, we have a history of horses sadly being killed as a result of the rapid-spreading wildfires. Anthony joined so many members of our community that we have practiced these emergency evacuations. And as a result of Anthony going up and as the fires were reaching Stetson Ranch and rapidly ascending that hillside, he was part of the team that safely evacuated 71 horses. And when the communications, as you indicated, aren't always as operating the way they're supposed to between the EOC, because these are rapidly changing moments, I went to the Hanson Dam Equestrian Center to essentially activate it myself. And those are the moments that we have to do in these emergency situations. We are part of the team of that first response. And I also want to say to anyone that's listening, there should be a special place in hell for the individuals that are looting amidst this tragedy. And I have no -- there's just no words for the amount of -- it's disgusting, the amount of exploiting of this tragedy that people are doing right now. And so, I would just encourage colleagues that each of us, in the wake of what we are experiencing right now, continue to band together to do this work with great urgency to prioritize resources that will ensure the safety and protection of Angelenos everywhere. Because the truth is, is that there's no area that isn't under duress or exposure for the continued tragedies that we've already seen occur in the Palisades and so many other neighborhoods. And so, I look forward to continuing to work to build out the facilities that respect the work that need to happen in these emergencies. My district has still been denied for decades that second fire station. We have many stations that are still haven't been fully restored in services. We got a lot of work to do, and we have a lot of soul-searching to do about what our priorities are and how we meet them efficiently across this city equitably and responsibly. But I look forward to continuing that work, and I urge everybody to please encourage your districts and your constituents to be ready, because everyone's on notice with these winds. Note, we are not out of the woods yet.
Thank you, Council President. I want to start by thanking Councilwomen Park and Ramon and Rodriguez for your leadership and care this last week. It's been inspiring to see you all at work and an honor to partner with you. And of course, want to quickly just add to the chorus of people thanking first responders who have done an incredible job, not only LAFD and LAPD, but the thousands of folks who've come in from around the world. I had a chance to tour the Palisades a few days ago and saw people from San Francisco and Seattle and Arizona, and their presence here is deeply meaningful. L.A. is a really beautiful place, and there are few places that are as beautiful or were as beautiful as Pacific Palisades. And that loss is tragic. But Los Angeles is also a beautiful people, a beautiful place because of its people. And we saw the kindness and grace and dignity and humanity of Angelenos on full display this last week. People taking in neighbors and friends and even strangers. I had constituents showing up by the hundreds at the Westwood Rec Center and Pan Pacific Park the night we stood up. Pan Pacific Park is an evacuation zone. People flooding in to help within minutes of the announcement being made. For five hours, people brought things and tried to help. We had to turn them away at some point because the Red Cross took over. It was -- it was beautiful to see, and it took my breath away and my team's breath away. So thank you. Also, taking our breaths away, our collective breaths away, is the devastation in the Palisades. I grew up in the Palisades, and I had a chance to see it earlier this week, and it's gone. It's largely gone. The elementary schools, the library, the park and rec centers, the thousands of homes, basically the whole village, it's all gone. And so, we have a lot of work to do, an incredible amount of work for the 15 of us around this horseshoe and across all levels of government, working together. I know that all of us are committed to doing that work with intelligence and grace and speed and thoughtfulness. And we are going to do it while we're also preparing for the Olympics, and we're going to -- actually, a lot of the stuff we need to do for the Olympics and the other major games coming to L.A., the streamlining, the taking away red tape, these are the same things we're going to need to employ as we rebuild the Palisades. So there's efficiencies there, and I look forward to working with all of you on figuring out what those efficiencies are to make our city overall function better. At the same time, we also know that we have a huge responsibility to the rest of Los Angeles, to Angelenos who expect reasonably for us to continue to do things like solve homelessness and improve public safety and fix our potholes and our sidewalks and all the other things that we know that we have to do for a well-functioning city. The last thing that we're going to need to do a lot better is build a more climate-resilient city. The fires these last week have made the cost of inaction abundantly clear. This can't be a zero-sum game. We are going to have to figure out how to grow the pie so that we can do all of these things. On the Budget Committee, we're going to be going hard after all of the federal, state, county dollars we can, and then we'll be figuring out how to fill in gaps to make our whole city, our city whole.
City Attorney, you have an announcement?
Yes, so I didn't want to interrupt the councilmembers while they were speaking, but Mr. Spindler, this is your first and only warning. Please do not disrupt any of the speakers, including Councilmember Rodriguez, while they are making their announcements. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Council President, for giving us an opportunity to reflect on these past few days. Councilmember Park, I can't imagine the pain you're feeling. We all run for these seats because we love our communities. And while I haven't had the pleasure of spending time in the Palisades, looking at these images and thinking about any neighborhood that would have suffered that kind of devastation, it's really unspeakable. And I commend you and your team for your leadership during this time and for your steadiness.
Thank you, Council President, for creating a space to have this reflection. And I just first want to start where Councilwoman Ramon left off, which is, we are still in a danger mode. You know, we're going to talk about recovery today and moving forward, but we are not out of this crisis, and folks need to adhere to those evacuations and continue to be vigilant and to continue to support our first responders. This is a -- this tragedy has changed our city in so many ways, and my heart, Councilwoman Park, goes out to you and your team. You know, we've communicated through text over this crisis, but -- and I know how difficult it has been for all of us, but I know how unimaginable it is to have your district destroyed in the way that it has been. And please know, District 11 is now, and has been, but is now the city of Los Angeles. We are all in this together, and we will fight for your constituents and for this recovery, as if there are the constituents in our districts, because we are one city. And I should say, I mean, I have a little -- this is -- this crisis for me is very reminiscent of the Northridge earthquake, which I was very involved with as a staffer back then for Congressman Berman, and people said at that point that it'll be a ghost town, we'll never recover. And there was this, you know, while all this was going on, there was a certain feeling of hopelessness. But we did recover, and we will recover, and we will do everything that we can to make sure that that happens as fast as it can. And as the new Chair of the Planning and Land Use Committee, I know that I'm going to make sure that we devote the time and energy of that committee to streamlining our procedures that get in the way of rebuilding, and that we're going to have to do things very differently. Business as usual, it cannot exist. Maybe it should never have existed the way it was, but moving forward, it's not an option. We have to fundamentally change the way we do things in this city so that we can grow back and we can build back in a strong way. And we're fortunate at the moment with FEMA and 100% reimbursement. We need to go at full speed, because we don't know in the future, in the new administration, how that all is going to play out, but we do know that right now we have 180 days of full FEMA recovery, and we cannot afford to waste a minute of that and to expand our operations for that recovery, so that we take advantage of that and rebuild this city.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, colleagues, for all your words that you shared. I want to just start off by talking directly to Councilwoman Park. Councilwoman Park, witnessing the work that you and your team have been doing for your district and Palisades has been very inspiring and motivating. Like, you all are coming up on once-in-a-generation catastrophe happening in one neighborhood, but you have been on the ground, letting the entire city know what's happening in your district, advocating for your constituents. And it's just, I mean, I can't imagine a better response from you. So thank you for being that example for all of us. Some of us who are very privileged that we did not get impacted by the fires, air quality, of course, but I just want to say thank you for your leadership in just some really tough times. I can't imagine the 24-hour cycles that you and your team have been on continuously. And to that, I also want to say to my colleagues, you know, we are a city of 15 districts, but everybody around this horseshoe has come together in one way or another to support each other, to support Councilwoman Park. Councilmember Bob Blumenfield gave our district a thousand masks. Councilmember McCosker is helping us obtain more resources. And I know that it's happening all in the back scenes of everything, but that for me is just reassuring that we all care about Los Angeles, that we all love our people, that we are willing to do whatever it takes, regardless of what it is, to make sure that we're not leaving anybody behind. So thank you, colleagues, for reaching out, for being there, for being there for each other and all of us. I think there's no other better example of government working at its best other than this moment right here. So thank you. Just to -- and I'm almost done, Council President, but I just want to uplift Councilmember Yaroslavky what you said around climate change, around the environment. That needs to be at the forefront of this conversation, because once-in-a-generation catastrophes are happening year after year after year, the hurricane and other events. So this is not new to us, so I look forward how we as a city move forward with that lens as well.
You know, colleagues, the night that the winds began, and I started to see everything happening on the news, you know, immediately I saw you, Councilmember Price, on TV, and I immediately knew it's going to be quite a week for her. So I made sure that I sent you a text and let you know, you're doing great, let me know if you need anything. But I was also feeling those winds, seeing those winds, and I feared that it was only a matter of time before I got a phone call and was told that there was something going on at the Sepulveda Basin. But luckily, our firefighters and our park rangers were on top of it and didn't let that spiral out of control, and they were able to focus on the Palisades and what later came in CD-7 and Silmar. And they were able to focus on the Palisades and what later came in CD 7 and Silmar. But like many of your districts, what did happen was that people in my area were affected by power outages. So my team and I went into action. We made sure we reported the lack of power and identified those obstacles, those dangerous hazards like fallen trees, bent poles, and fallen wires. And I am incredibly grateful also to all of the workers of LAPD, Public Works, Department of Water and Power, for being on top of those additional hazards that were affecting our everyday lives as a result to the winds. But as the days went by, and my team and I continued to stay in contact with those of our area, we started to capture the stories that reflected the interconnectedness of our communities. And the main stories that we were starting to hear that showed that were that our gardeners, our housekeepers, pool services, nannies, caretakers, personal chefs didn't have anywhere to report to to go to work because they worked in the Pacific Palisades. So this has really affected our service sector enterprises. And it is why I am going to be focusing on supporting nonprofits in my district that can support folks that have lost income due to the interconnectedness of our local economy that are affected by this fire. And I also welcome all of you and encourage all of you to hear those stories and understand those and also figure out ways to support them because we're probably not going to be able to do so through the formal ways that might come through state or federal aid. So again, I want to reiterate how grateful I am to all of our city family, all of the departments that have helped with this, and councilmembers. Just like you're all mentioning, we're all in this together. And we have plenty of examples that have happened in Los Angeles that showcase that when we stay focused, that when we see ourselves as a city, we do rebuild, and we always rebuild stronger and better than ever. May God help us all.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Padilla. Councilmember Soto Martinez.
Thank you so much, Council President. You know, as a district that was not directly affected by that, although we did have a little bit scare, you know, I can begin to understand the pain, frustration, and anger and heartbreak that so many people are carrying right now from the folks that lost everything to the thousands of people who are currently evacuated. It is just an imaginable amount of pain. And Councilwoman Park, I hope that this body and the city can carry some of that pain and grief with you. You know, you don't have to do it alone. And I also want to show, express my deep appreciation for the first responders who have been there since day one and also the solidarity of first responders that have come from other states. Some of them are incarcerated, some are coming from different countries. Their bravery and their resilience has been truly inspiring. For the city employees, the ones that have restored the power, that have cleared the downed trees, the librarians who are providing masks, all the city libraries, this is heavy work, and it seems like every city employee has stepped up to the task. And every department and every council office, this was a moment where we put politics aside and we came together to support each other. I was very thankful that Councilmember Hernandez opened up her field office where Councilwoman Ramon, Councilwoman Geraldo, and myself were able to create a mutual aid hub to collect donations. And it's a lot of... The outpouring has been really incredible, and that will be going to the families directly affected. You know, I think these fires forced us to think about the larger picture, to move beyond ourselves and recognize what is it that this city needs at this moment? What are the folks from the Pacific Palisades needing in this moment? The folks from the valley, what do they need in this moment? And so that solidarity has been really inspiring, and we're going to need a lot of it because a rebuilding effort is going to take some time. It's going to take a lot of work. So I look forward to being part of that work and continuing to show my solidarity. Thank you so much.
I want to thank everybody for sharing today and doing the hard thing of sitting in the sadness because this tragedy is just remarkably heartbreaking. Walking through the Pacific Palisades, you know, with the Councilwoman Park and for a second with Councilwoman Yaroslavski, and then seeing on TV the street that I lived on in middle school in Altadena just gone. Gone. I mean, just gone. It's tough to sit with, but it's important work that we do as a part of the recovery and a part of summoning our resolve to absolutely build Palisades back better and restore as much as we can, as is as humanly possible, as fast as we can. I want to make sure there are no other members, there are no other members on the queue, but if you want to speak and you don't show up, Mr. Nazarian, I want to make sure you have an opportunity to speak before we go to public comment and regular business.
Thank you, Mr. President. I... Since I'm one of the newer additions, I just wanted to make sure I gave deference to everybody else before I got up and said anything. So I just wanted to take a minute... Are you okay there? Do you need some water? There's some outside. Councilmember Park, I deeply appreciate your fierce advocacy on behalf of your constituents and your compassionate love. Those are two tough things to handle and balance, but you've demonstrated how efficiently and how deftly you can command the attention of everyone around you to make sure that you're catering to the needs of your constituents. So I very much appreciate that about you and everything that you've done. I'm... I consider myself very fortunate that the hardest part of the hit for our district was that we just had a significant number of outages, but that's where it ended. Road closures, debris pickup, everything else. So I can... It's very difficult to imagine what you're going through, what you're going to continue to go through, and what your constituents are going through. I had an opportunity to get a drive with CAL FIRE on Sunday, and I took a handful of my staffers. We had a caravan because as we start our term, I wanted them to know and understand what can happen and go so wrong so fast and to understand what it means to serve firmly, efficiently, but at the same time with a great deal of compassion. So thank you for being the embodiment of that. I... Times like this, it's more of time for reflection and gratitude. So I wanted to just thank all of the crews, from street services to the DWP crews that worked extremely hard, to all the first responders, including the Conservation Corps folks, folks that were doing all the little things to make it easier for the first responders to actually be able to get their work done. So I am in great awe and gratitude to all of them. And while I don't want to get into any policy discussion here, first of all, I appreciate Councilmember Padilla bringing up the issue of the unspoken individuals in our economy and marketplace who are not going to have the opportunity to earn a living now. I share that sentiment. I know I have many individuals who will silently suffer in my district, so I look forward to working with you on that. But I also want to take this moment and say that while there were the common level of thieves who were being apprehended, there's also going to be a different type of vulturing act that's going to be taking shape. And I look forward to working with you, Councilmember Park, as well as everybody else on this body to make sure that there isn't a reallocation or redistribution of middle-class wealth to single entities or individual entities that are looking to monopolize on land space in our city or around our city either. This is going to be a critical time for us to be very eyes-wide open while we're dealing with the human suffering and loss of property. At the same time, we have to make sure that we're vigilant, not only against the fire, but also to other acts that are going to have significant consequence for generations to come if there is an impact to our middle-class residents and the opportunity for them to pass their generational wealth on to their kids, to be stolen from them. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak and say a few words, Mr. Council President.
Thank you so much, Mr. Nazarian.